Evening. My name is Eric Lynch. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Inland Wetland Commission meeting for the town of Monroe. Today is Wednesday, July 23rd, and the time is 6:32 PM. Will everyone please stand to recite the pledge of allegiance?
Well, the allegiance to the flag, the space of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll take a roll call of the members of the commission and staff present during tonight's hybrid meeting. Please enter here or present, starting with myself, Eric Lynch, chairman here. Brian Kelly, vice chairman.
Here.
Rick Smith.
Here.
Jim Stewart.
Here.
Benjamin Xavier.
Here.
Paul Fernandez.
Here.
Mark Zemery.
Here.
Kathleen Gallagher, planning and zoning administrator.
Here.
And Andrew Brahman, inland wetlands enforcement officer.
Here.
And just for the record, Commissioner Fernandez was here via Zoom.
Before we start, I'll read our mission statement and how the meeting will proceed. The objective and purpose of the inland wetland commission is to provide for the overall protection and preservation of the inland wetlands and watercourses within the town of Monroe. Please note that this meeting is being conducted utilizing electronic equipment in compliance with state law, public act 21-1. As such, this meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with state law. If you are attending remotely, you will automatically be muted and unable to unmute yourself. If you wish to speak during the public participation portion of the meeting, please use the raise hand function. If you are participating via telephone, press star nine to activate the raise hand feature. Staff will announce your name and unmute you when it is your turn to speak. The video feature has also been disabled for public participation. Anyone participating remotely should state their name and title if applicable at the outset of each occasion such that each person is speaking. All votes taken during which any member of this body are participating remotely shall be taken by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. The chat features will not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. In the normal course of our meetings, we will hear public hearings and other applications. The protocol for public hearings is to have an applicant make a presentation to the commission during which and after which the commission will be asking the applicant questions. I ask applicants keep their presentations as concise as possible. The commission will then review town, staff, and other independent comments. The meeting will then be open for public comment. I will ask that all comments be made to the chair or commission. After any and all comments pro, in opposition, or of a general nature are made, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. Please keep comments or questions direct, or a time limit of three minutes may be imposed. It's not necessary that the applicant respond, but generally in their best interest to do so. There will be no further opportunity for new questions unless new materials entered in as evidence or testimony during the response. Please keep all comments pro and con specific to inland wetland related matters. Other applications that do not involve a public hearing will follow a similar format with the exception that there will be no public comments allowed. The meeting follows our published agenda unless otherwise amended. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there's a change to the agenda. We received a, an email today. It's in front of you. It's on your desks. I will read it into record. Dear Commission members on behalf of the applicants Astro Land Holdings LLC and Spacely Land Holdings LLC, we withdraw the permit approval amendment modification application for the restoration remediation permit IWC 2021-06R-A1 for 64 Cambridge Drive and for Independence Drive. Any questions or comments? And there's a form over.
You discuss this now or wait until?
Well, there's not, they're withdrawing the application.
Correct, but there is a act of violation that needs to be addressed.
You would just need to then add it to the violation, to the enforcement actions of the agenda. We just wouldn't discuss it under deliberation.
Right. Motion to add the violation 64 Cambridge Drive and for Independence Drive to the agenda.
We have a motion to add that discussion to the agenda. Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Got a second? On paper?
All right. Second, Benjamin Xavier.
Okay. All right, so, um, all right, so now, general public participation. Is there anybody online, since there's nobody in chambers, who would like to speak in a general nature at tonight's meeting?
We have one participant online.
That's good. Yeah, it's anyone that attendees.
That is a no?
No.
So, moving on, regulated activities are none, no meetings, no public hearings. We have eliminated the deliberation. So, moving all the way down to agent activities report, so agent approvals.
Agent approvals, IAA-25-19, file number 1543181 Hammer Town Road, is the expansion of a 276 square foot expansion of an existing deck. It lands within the upland review area. It is a 12 by 23 expansion. It lies 40 foot outside the wetland area and within the upland review area. I issued an agent approval. Conditions of that approval were to remove all the excavated materials that were, for the footings, remove them from the upland review area with pre and post silt fence inspections. I had an agent approval, IAA-25-20, file number 1544, is 114 Hammer Town Road. It's in a, it's a garage addition with stormwater management within the upland review area. They added, they're adding a breezeway connection from a detached garage. Their addition is approximately three feet closer to wetlands, within storage space above that garage and the breezeway connection connecting the house to the detached garage. Conditions of that approval were to add a rain garden for stormwater management, all excavated material to be removed from the upland review area, silt fence with pre and post construction inspections.
Is the minimum size of the rain garden?
The, the, it was based on the square footage. I want to say it was 10 by 15, six inches deep. There's a calculation for that based on, and that's reviewed by the engineer, by the town engineer.
You're good.
So, in this instance, I asked them to install wetland markers because it's not really clear where the wetlands are.
Great.
So, those are the conditions of that approval.
Thank you.
There was one more agent approval that I issued, IAA-25-21, file number 1545, 615 Monroe Turnpike, installation of a 60 linear foot privacy fence within the upland review area. Where they're looking to put this privacy fence is not on the property line, but it runs parallel to a drainage swell, which is what flagged the, the wetland approval. It's 60 linear feet. It's really just for privacy. It doesn't run the whole length of the property line, so it's just where the, where the sight lines are. Conditions of that approval were to dig the fence posts by hand, remove that material from the upland review area, and install wetland markers. Yes.
So, there's no other disturbance besides the post holes done?
Besides the post holes. I was going to have them leave the fence a couple inches high, but because it didn't run the whole distance, I had them go right to the ground with it.
Okay.
If I was asking them to raise it up a little bit, it would be for critters.
To go underneath.
Right, whether they're amphibians, but because it only went 60 feet, I didn't see a need for that.
You got a landscape near this fence?
Uh, no. It's, uh, it's lawn on one side, it's brushwoods, shrubs on the other side, and then the drainage swell.
Thank you.
And that was it for agent approvals. Enforcement, so IWV 2024-03, file number 1595, is 68 East Village Road. This was a continuation from last, the last meeting where, where discussing whether or not to issue a citation. A request for their attendance went out on June 17th, requesting the owner's presence on June 25th. We received the email on June 25th, the night of that meeting, where they were unable to attend, and on June 25th, the commission determined that, uh, we would give the owner until tonight's meeting to address the violation issuing a citation, before issuing a citation.
Any response between then and now?
Did any response, which is on your, on your desks.
Sharon Jones.
Anybody in attendance?
Uh, I thought there would be, I thought there would be somebody in attendance, but there's nobody here, and there is nobody on, um... No.
There's one person in attendance, but unless they have to press their hand button and we can unmute you. We don't believe they're associated with this application. Their attorney did write the letter. I did write them a response and invited them to tonight's meeting. My response was just the timeline of events, giving them copies of the original voluntary compliance from the beginning of 2024, the official notice of a violation again from a year ago, and then some of the correspondence that had happened back and forth. So, no new information. I just gave them a summary of, of what was there and then made sure that they were aware of tonight's meeting and invited them to that meeting.
Oh.
Yeah, to this meeting.
So, I mean, I'm breezing through this letter. I'm not sure it's bringing anything new to light, other than the fact that his attorney is saying.
It's mostly just.
He's in violation and...
And then what, it sounded like he had only given her the last letter, and that's why I just basically gave her, but she didn't do a FOIA request, but we were just trying to be kind. Andrew happened to be out that day, so I responded to her literally within minutes to try to be as cooperative as possible. I just gave her more additional information, letters, things like that, just other things that were on the record.
So, they've, they've had this for a week?
And I believe they actually just walked in.
Okay.
Hi, you're up. We're talking about you right now.
Sorry. Very good for it. Clifford Cusio, 68 East Village Road.
We're just going through your letter from Sharon Jones.
Uh, so, in the situation of the violation, conversations last night with the contractor. He's agreed to remediate before the next meeting. He was gonna come here tonight, express that to you, and explain his plan and how he's gonna get it done. He sent me a message about an hour ago, saying he's had a family emergency. He apologized, whether he will, in his words. Sorry, tonight, you could let the commission know. I'm willing to do the remediation with you and to get it done within the next 14 days to be compliant. He's gonna bury the brunt of that. Terms of my violation on that corner of the road opening, we're gonna remediate that 11 feet of ground to the stone wall, according to your plan. Question he had was, can he then finish and put the apron on, which we stopped because of the question of the ground. He used part of the plan for the road opening again. Permit is for the road opening only, not the driveway, and part of that permit was to pave a five foot apron on that road opening, so it didn't road. So, he stopped. We stopped that, waiting to get this resolved. We were advised not to pay until we got this resolved. So, his question is, can you finish with the permit of the road opening, which said he could pave that five feet by 15 or whatever it was?
It's loud and it's in the permit.
They have, they have a permit for the road opening.
Right.
So, I, staff has no objection to it.
As long as they're following what they're supposed to do.
As long as the violation is, is remediated.
Right.
Staff has no objection to that.
Perfect. So, when's our next meeting?
Uh, our next meeting isn't until the 20, 25 or 20?
It's 27.
27.
The longest?
Yeah, there's only one meeting.
He said within 14 days, I'll hold him to that.
You'll let staff know when they're out there?
Yeah, I'll need to inspect the silt fence before construction and then again after.
With the haybales?
With the haybales, yes.
So, Mr. Cusio, in a letter from Sharon Jones, it talks about the cost of remediation belongs to the parties who he recently, you, reasonably relied, the contractor and the town. Can you explain to me what the town is going to do or what you expect from the town?
My lawyer's just saying it's not gonna be on me because we followed the permit. So, now, Mr. Everett said he will handle it. It's gonna be on him. So, I think she was just saying it's not gonna be on me if there's a cost.
I just want to make sure that we understand that there's no cost.
So, sorry, she's in here.
I just want to be sure that there is no cost associated with this to the town, unless you claim.
Not, not on that, not on that area in the corner there that we're mediating for this violation.
Okay. Thank you.
We're good? Um, yeah.
So, we're not moving forward with a citation, it sounds like. Is that correct? Is that the summary?
If, if this is resolved in the next 14 days, then I'd say we will pause. If it's not, then...
I think it's okay to say by the next meeting, honestly. Well, I mean, but it's probably worth being really clear that if anything comes up in between now and then, you know, that's not something that I think we're gonna be agreeable to.
I'm just like, you know, I have a contractor who paid, pulled this permit, didn't what he was supposed to do, so he shouldn't have gone before he went, and pushed it into a corner, says he'll remediate. I don't have the equipment to remediate it. He's the contractor. He's the hired party. He's the ones that paid. If he comes up with something, I'll have my lawyer push a little harder on him, but I can't, you know, I can't guarantee his schedule, or if he comes up with, I mean, he's got a baby on the way, a bunch of other stuff, so, I, you know, I'll give you my word that I'm pushing him to get it done in 14 days. He's been warning politely. I think he's gonna take that seriously, and he's gonna get it done.
I think that's great, but I think it's irrelevant to what action we take, right? So...
Okay, just, right, or we got into like, if something happens and it doesn't get done, I can't guarantee anything, other than that he said he will get it done. He put it in writing to me, so that went to my lawyer.
You can understand, we, we've been extremely patient with this whole matter, so can understand why we're making sure that this is going to get done, so.
I think one option we have that we haven't done is we could just, I think the biggest concern from the commission was the potential selling of the house without the violation being remediated. You know, we often will record citations on the land records in specific situations. We'll also record the notice of violation. We haven't done it here. That's something that we're happy. It's easy enough for us to do. We just record it on the land records. If somebody buys a house, does a title search, it's gonna show up, and it's easy enough for us to write a letter after it's been remediated and literally the same day, just go and record it. So, again, if someone pulls the title, we'll see the violation, they'll see it was remediated.
And the real estate land, you're right, so there were...
That's fine. I, I agree with that.
So, is that something we can do just as a backup to make the commission feel a little...
That's fair.
So, any questions in the interim? We're gonna let Andrew be, you know, the enforcement and the agent to, to tell you if there's any, to, you know, resolve anything, and I'm sorry, but his, the fact that he's gonna have a child.
I didn't say that was a shoot. I'm just saying, I was just giving some insight to his life. He's not, he's not a personal friend of mine, but, I mean, I'm assuming his emergency was because his child's a baby, like, the child, I think, oh.
He's gonna have a baby, and it just so happens that we're gonna have a baby, and it doesn't matter, it doesn't interfere on...
Who's having a baby here?
Sorry. Okay.
No.
Okay.
So, so I think that's...
So, we will...
Yeah, go ahead.
We'll take her requisite. You don't need a motion or anything for that.
No, I don't think so. The only other item is I happened to be at 66 East Village the other day for something not related to this, and I did see that there was a bunch of debris that was dumped along the driveway easement on your property on the wetland side of that easement, so it looked like it was...
The tree company came, Eversource, a tree came down, and I, I called Eversource this week and speaking to their management team, which is Lewis, because they're taking trees down. We have trees along that 600 foot easement that are dead and dying, and two are down now against my owners. A tree came down at 1:00 AM about three weeks ago, back there, and blocked the driveway. It took out the power, and they came at 2:00 in the morning, so I threw coffee, walked in them. They cut and threw everything to the right.
This is just like leaves and grass clippings and...
That's what's going on for John Low's stuff over there, when grass clippings.
I specifically straight out asked them if it was them, and...
I showed, I put the leaves over there too, along the side of the driveway as well.
Uh, yes. Could, do you want to talk about why we don't put leaves in?
Yeah, I mean, that's, you're not supposed to be putting, depositing anything into wetlands.
That's what's going on.
Or removing anything from wetlands. So, if you're dumping even leaves, branches, cuttings, anything like, I mean, any debris at all, that's in violation.
Okay. Does John know not to blow things off that way?
Uh, he most certainly does, since you issued a complaint about his wood chips.
That was filling in the wetlands up in the back, not in the easement, right?
But at that time, I had had a talk with him about what he is and what is not supposed to be doing.
Okay. It's just leaf mulch against base of the trees.
It's still, it's, it's, you can't put it there because it restricts growth. It acts as a mulch. It restricts growth from the ground up.
Good.
So, I would just ask that that be remediated before...
Did you see the growth along that easement when you went in there, 600 feet? The briars and everything grows up.
I was just driving it.
I'm just saying, you can't miss it because we have to cut it back. It's dangerous at times, but that's as restricted. But I hear you. I understand.
So, I would just ask before you have him come out to check the, just also make sure that's removed so that he can take it from there as well.
And I, I will ask, there's an open issue that I'd like to somehow schedule a hearing to talk about the easement and how that work was progressed without following state statutes that presented to this commission. I'd like to know how we address that. You, you weren't, you would come in right after.
This was before my time. I'm not fully familiar with how everything took place.
I'll send you a file and you can look at it.
We have a file. I can look. I was here at the end of it.
And I laid it out pure and clear, so that's no misunderstanding of what the state statutes were, how they were ignored in emails to this committee, and when this committee was brought attention to it in a meeting, you insisted they apologize to the person who they were reprimanded for not following it. So, I'd like to open it up again and find out, since we're following and enforcing statutes on the other side of the street, how do we not enforce them on the other side of the street?
You're using some wordage, and just so that we're clear, we're not enforcing a state statute. We're enforcing our inland wetland regulations. So, if you're referring to a state statute, I'm a little unclear what statute you're referring to, but are you saying?
You should know them, because in the meeting, your meetings, you usually read and say, we're here to enforce the wetland violations according to state statutes.
Yes, the state statutes grants us the power to do it, so I don't know which state.
It's like I was supposed to know about that right away after I said the word. You should know about the state statutes.
I'm trying to prepare.
And I did send them to you several times, just letting you know. I'm sorry you were correct.
Nope, no worries. I'll take a look at it. Have your attorney, talk to our attorney.
I'll just, no, it's an open issue. I'll send you the file. I created it to make it very clear on what the issue was. You think there's something we can discuss? I'd like to open up your discussion.
I, my understanding is you have several outstanding issues, so for you to just say that you only have one right now, I just don't know what specific one you're talking about.
I have several outstanding issues, other than the violation. What other issue do you have in mind?
No, no, against the, with that specific project and how it was handled. My understanding...
Yeah, I'm here with me. I get thrown up at the screen. Honestly, I don't want to take your time.
Several bullet points that I know you take exception to, so if you're only down to one, I just don't know what specific one it is.
It's the, the easement, the remediation and expansion and modification of the easement without following state statutes.
So, if it's, if it's, never mind.
I'll, I'll, I'll forward it to you and you can share it with the committee, and then I'll schedule a hearing if we can, because I'd like to get that resolved as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope everyone had a good summer. It's still going. Happy fourth. Just having a baby. Good luck. Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay. Moving on to... I did, we see 2021-06RA-A1, 64 Cambridge? So, given that they've withdrawn their application, there still is an active violation that, it doesn't sound like they've addressed the question. They said, if you have any questions, well, the question is, okay, what are you doing?
Yeah, we can follow up with, I would recommend we go to solely first, to understand what, what their plan is, but we can ask them to come in front of the commission, even if it's just via Zoom to talk about, yeah.
Maybe they just present a letter, just, okay, the violation is this, and here's what we're gonna do until we decide what we're...
They need to start coming again this fall slash winter, so they do have a little bit of time to come up with a, like, option, but yes, they should come up with a plan now so that they have that time to...
Just to be clear, because this is something I think we kind of talked about in some compet, like, their solar panels as a permanent amendment to the application was not, that doesn't matter. The application is closed, but there was a question I think Commissioner Stewart asked, couldn't they do that and see how it works? And, and that in theory remediates the violation, but it doesn't, it's not a, an amendment to the application.
Doesn't pay the fill.
Correct. The original approval included them pumping for up to, you know, 10 years while they were remediating the rest of the site. So, yes, they have to come up with a plan now on how to either bring that well back to life or do something else that would satisfy the requirement for pumping into the well.
Right. They were supposed to drill additional wells in order to feed those solar panels that pumps.
Not part of...
Not part of the original approval.
That was part of, that was part of the application that we were looking at, but it wasn't part of the remediation that they are required to do.
That wasn't part of their original conditions of their original approval.
So, the original approval was pump water from the existing wells they're claiming in this.
While bringing in all that fill.
Right. Well, during, during this withdrawn application, they said, well, we want to drill new holes.
Right.
Leave them there and not fill everything up. That's a really short summary, you know, and now they've withdrawn that. But they still are required to continue pumping however they decide, but they need to get power to the current pumps. If they want to change that, they need a new application to say we want to add more wells, or however they want to start pumping water, but they gotta start pumping water and also filling in.
What was the order thing? Did this come to us as a violation and then the amendment? Or are we acknowledge the violation as a result of the amendment?
They disclosed that they stopped providing power to the well.
And is there an official?
During this application.
Is there an official violation?
No, because they were going to, in turn, potentially remediate it if this got approved. So, when they're in the process of remediating something, we don't typically issue a violation, one, because now we're all aware of it, and two, we'd like to see how it turns out. But now that it's been withdrawn...
So, should we issue a formal violation?
I mean, that's up to you. We can talk to them first to see what's going on. I, I say we should issue a letter of voluntary compliance, so it's just on the record.
Is this the original fill application? Like, there's a date approaching, isn't there?
We, we, myself and Attorney Finn have a differentiating opinions on what the timeline is. Our town attorney Frank Olito is in the process of writing an opinion on what he thinks the stance is for that. Attorney Finn's opinion is the 2021 approval started the 10-year clock, well, the five year clock with a potential five year extension, so a total of 10 years for inland wetlands. My personal opinion is that the clock actually paused while they were in litigation for the planning and zoning approval, because the planning and zoning approval was not upheld. They had to come back in for another 20... They had to come back in for another twenty twenty three planning and zoning approval of which was approved. That went into litigation. So typically I will not take the start date until the decision is rendered from litigation. And I'll start the permitting from that process because it's not fair. You don't know where you are or if something is going to change as part of the litigation. So I don't think their five years started until May of this year, May of this year, because that's when the decision was rendered for planning and zoning. They disagree with that. They believe it started in twenty twenty one. So I have laid it out for our attorney and he's going to write an opinion.
And they would prefer it started sooner than later?
They prefer that it not prefer their legal interpretation on their end is that it started in twenty twenty one.
Right. But if if we're giving them more time.
My interpretation is that it started in May of twenty twenty five.
Right. So if if our interpretation is it starts later, I'm just wondering if we're giving them those couple of years, why are they arguing against them?
Well, they, if if we say the permit hasn't started yet, then they really weren't violation until May of twenty twenty five.
There you go.
Well, that's why I'm curious as to why they're so interested in it starting sooner rather than later. What's what's their position and what's their advantage to that?
I can't speak on that.
Oh, I'm.
Yeah, I understand.
I mean, they wanted to expire after five years. I don't know.
Perhaps urgency is on the side.
I mean, they wanted to expire so that they're expired and we have to make a decision.
It's all speculation.
Right.
Yeah.
The withdrawal, was that related to the P and Z determination or discussions?
Uh, we don't have any information on that. All we have is the letter that you see in front of you. It.
We do have information. They did, they asked for the planning and zoning commission meeting to be continued. So we did not hear them at the planning and zoning commission meeting on the seventeenth. So is it connected? I don't know, but I can tell you that there was no discussion at that meeting.
They're withdrawing the application from P and Z too.
They have not given us a letter withdrawing it, but I would assume that could be a potential unless they amend their amendment, amend that application to an extent of which then a wetland approval would not be required such as purely amending it to only change like the Philanty protocol. That doesn't need a wetland approval because that wasn't a condition of this commission. They would still be disturbing the area as was approved in this commission's approval. But the substance of the fill would change, which again, I don't believe they need a wetland permit because when it was originally approved, you guys weren't even being presented. I'm just looking at Paul had did something. You guys didn't even know that that was going to be a condition of of the planning and zoning approval. So it wasn't dependent upon the approval.
Okay. More on any of that.
Okay.
They've withdrawn and until we hear from them, there's not much we can do.
Um, since since the next meeting is not for almost a month from now, I could start with emailing.
Yeah.
Just asking what their plan, what is their plan of attack now?
I think that's fair. Based on our chance, we can.
It is interesting if one of the concerns of this commission. Are we allowed to be talking about this at this point with a closed hearing? We can in the sense in the context of the violation.
As long as we're talking about the violation.
Yeah, I would ask them how they're going to, how they're planning on on resuming pumping this ball. And we want to hear from them next meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
Or in writing, whatever. Yeah, how they also have to present, but as long as they communicate.
Yeah.
Okay, here's.
Fire it up.
Yeah. Here's what we're going to.
Okay, yep. So we'll start emailing and find out what their plan is and what their timeframe is.
Perfect. Yep. That's, that's all we need to hear.
And I'll update you at the next meeting what their responses are.
Okay. Okay. Moving on. So voluntary compliance.
Uh, voluntary compliance. Five sixty Hammer Town Road. We had issued them a permit for a driveway, a well and, oh, and a septic area. Um, and they were operating with, they were operating outside the limits of disturbance. They had a storage container and it was two, three feet in from the silt fence. So I spoke to the property owner and he was willing to just move it out of the way. Didn't realize that that's where, that he was in outside the limit of disturbance. So he'll move his storage container. As of last week, he hadn't moved it, but I will follow up this week. I wasn't around, uh, I wasn't around earlier in the week to do a follow up on that. There was some silt fence also that was down. That was part of the voluntary compliance. So he did, he did address some of what we needed him to address.
What kind of storage container?
Uh, it was one of those, uh, steel storage containers with solid doors that swing open. Uh, something that you would find on the back of a semi, a semi truck. Oh, no, no, big one.
Oh, we're talking a shipping container.
A shipping container.
Oh, my God.
A large shipping container. And it was just dropped two, three feet outside the limit of disturbance. He was waiting for a machine to get there to move it out to two, three feet, fix the silt fence, put down a conservation mix and he'll be back into compliance. Uh, so that's why it was a voluntary compliance and not a violation. One fifty three Cottage Street. I issued them a volunteer, a letter of voluntary compliance. This is a property, a small property and there's, I mean, it's a mess. There's, there's a lot of building materials and it's all sitting right next to a stream. It doesn't show any wetlands on the property. However, there is a stream that runs along through the property. Uh, and there's a lot of building materials and all sorts of other foreign materials. And I have not gotten a response from them yet, but that just happened last week. So I will follow up with that.
Why would the wetlands not have been delineated? Because it never was.
Uh, no, 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 no. Um, it doesn't show on GIS, it shows no wetlands on the property. It, it wasn't picked up by by GIS. But there is an active stream running through there. So it's, you know, it's wetlands. So it's a wetlands issue. If, if we had that property delineated, it would certainly come up as wetlands. But it doesn't matter because I know that there's wetlands on the property. It's an active, it's an active stream. So anything that's there is there in violation. So I'm issuing them a voluntary compliance first to see if we get response. If we get response, great, they'll need to clean everything up. They'll have to get some dumpsters there and fill it in. If I don't get response from it, then I'll move to a violation. Unless you want, unless you have other instructions.
I just wonder when the delineation would occur. If they balked at your.
They haven't, I haven't had any.
But if they did balk, then the next step would will hold it.
Then I would have to, then I would make them get a, yeah, I would request that they get a soils delineated.
Okay.
That is one fifty three Cottage Street and then one oh eight Far Horizon Drive. The property owner here had a shed, a storage shed delivered and put in place. And it is in both violation of zoning and wetlands. So I went out, I made a site inspection. He's unaware of the side setback, the zoning ordinance. He's unaware of the wetlands ordinance. We informed him. He said he will certainly move it. He's in the process of getting the soils delineated so that he can put it as far back on his property as possible. I'll have you know that where it shows wetlands from our GIS, which is the only thing that I could go off of right now. It's, it's forty feet into established lawn. And then all the way in the back, there's woods and there's, you know, intermittent water stream in the back. Um, and he wants to get that as close as he can to the back of his property. When he gets those soils delineated, um, I'm going to guess where they are. But when I see the map, then I'll know where they are. Um, and he's going to want to get them as far back as he can. It is established lawn. I'm thinking if if we could get it twenty five feet into his lawn, that would be an agent approval. And if he really, if he really wants to get it closer than that, I'll have him do a full application and it'll come in front of you.
Makes sense. All right.
And that's what I have for voluntary compliance.
All right, then moving on down to our general discussion. Looks like we have three packets of minutes to go through.
I didn't see any issues with any of the minutes, any of the minutes packets. And I watched the video from six twenty five. So I am okay with approving the minutes of all three of these meeting minutes.
We have to prove them individually.
Individually, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
So do we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes for five twenty eight?
I'll make a move, a motion to approve the meeting minutes by twenty eight.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Meeting minutes for six eleven twenty five. Do we have a motion to approve?
Oh, do, uh, start a motion to approve for six eleven.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. All in favor?
All right.
All right.
Uh, I'm sorry. As we're doing this, I'm realizing Paul is on and he needs a vote, does he not?
Uh, yeah.
Paul, do you hear us?
Yes, I do.
All right. So what's your vote on the first five twenty eight meeting minutes?
I approve.
It proves it's unanimous. And then we just also.
Eleven.
Six eleven. Meeting minutes. He approves that. Okay. All right. And then lastly, the meeting minutes, there's, uh, still got to make a motion to approve the six twenty five meeting minutes.
We have a motion to approve the six twenty five.
We have a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
And second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That's, now you know, it's okay. Then we've got seven fifty four Main Street Stone Farm proposal for display area. That's this map you gave us here.
Yeah, so in front of you, there's a, there's a plan that's being, uh, there's going to be an application for this display area. It's a retail operation on, on Main Street, seven fifty four. It's called the Stone Farm, if you're familiar with it. I bring this to you because it is a commercial building. So typically any commercial project like this would go in front of the commission and have a full application. I bring it to you because I'm looking at it and it is, it's seventy feet off of wetlands surrounded by asphalt parking lot. It's pretty minor disturbance. They are planning on digging out the parking lot, cutting out the asphalt, digging out the parking lot, putting in pavers, putting in some plantings and putting a display area in with a pergola. The pergola has footings. It's going to have, uh, utilities, both gas for the fire pit and electricity. That will all need a building permit. But for, for you, for wetlands, we're decreasing the impermeable surfaces. There's no way for any sediment to move off of this site. It's across parking lots.
The permeable pages?
What's that?
Permeable pages?
Yes. Yep. There, it's a display area. So one area is permeable pavers.
Okay.
Another area is block.
Okay.
Impermeable. However, in doing this, they're reducing the amount of impermeable surface over the whole area.
Okay.
So the question to you to think about is, uh, do you want to see it as a full application?
Okay, so I'm having a little hard time with the lay of the land here.
Yep.
There's no directional compass on these.
Okay.
Street is.
Main street's over here. This is the driveway.
Where, what is the compare on Main Street? Like.
Okay. Bradford Green.
It's right across from Bradford Green, just north of Mason's Farm Market.
And then TLC is.
And TLC.
This side.
TLC is an abiding neighbor.
Right.
So I would like to visit the, and just walk the property with you if that's a, that's a.
That's perfectly okay with me.
I can to.
Does that, uh, does that impact whether you want to see this as an? You have the ability to have me do it as an agent approval or you have the ability to see it as a full application? Do you want to wait until the site walk? To make that determination?
And this is being brought in front of you because it's, it's a hardscape area being replaced with a hardscape area, but technically due to the footings, you know, and some of the areas, they are technically disturbing earth. And so, and it's a commercial property, so we do not issue agent approval for commercial properties unless the commission, you know, votes for it. So like it really, in our opinion, it's really quite minor. I'm even trying to look at planning and zoning so they don't have to do a minor site plan approval because it's a display area being replaced with a display area. Um, it's really minor.
I think we need to see it, but.
My concern is that it also has some post storage areas. And I just would like to get a lay of the land. I don't, I don't have a problem with.
We need storage areas.
Excuse me?
We need storage areas.
The storage areas.
Who's storage area?
The storage areas that you're looking at have already been approved.
We've already seen this as a whole application for the outdoor storage areas.
We saw that.
We approved, we approved this for their, their expansion of their outdoor storage.
It's reusing older drawings.
What's that?
Yeah, over two years ago.
And they're about a couple of months from being able to close out that permit. You've already done an initial inspection for wetlands, right?
Yes. They have wetland markers up. They've had their silt fences up.
You run that up.
That's not, this is a separate area. This is, this is a different area.
They're just reusing the older drawings that they submitted last time, all except for even though.
And approved.
And approved.
And contested.
There's nothing really to look at.
Do you need a motion?
It's a discussion.
You don't need a motion?
A motion or anything, right?
Uh, no, it's just a discussion.
We need a motion to make an agent approval.
Need a motion to make an agent.
Right. The question is, are you guys okay with letting them do an agent approval in this case? Because normally.
Motion to allow a agent approval on seven fifty four Main Street.
For the display area.
For the display area.
Only.
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 Okay. So we have a motion for that. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Who made the motion and who seconded?
All right. So it's all on you.
Yeah. Okay. Who, who made the motion? I'm sorry. And who seconded?
Stewart. Yep.
Zemory.
So I would still like to walk it with you.
Is that appropriate? Is that appropriate? I have no issue arranging that and going out there. Is that appropriate? Is that appropriate? I have no issue arranging that and going out there. Is that appropriate?
I don't think they have the right to walk it because the approval is closed, but you could voluntarily ask the owner to permit you guys to walk.
I will absolutely do that and he will have no issue with that, but I will, I would put that out.
Thank you.
Okay. Last, please.
Uh, public outreach?
I can address that.
Let's do it.
The, uh, on June 27th, we had a, what I believe was very successful, uh, outreach to the public.
Brochures.
Brochures were great. We had other, everybody, everybody pitched in. Barbara brought seeds to give out. So we had some stuff to give out from Aquarian, a little kits for water savings. We raffled off two, uh, rain barrels, which were, which were worth, I think $85 each. And made a great banner up front and we had, um.
Ben's mom.
Usually Zoo, uh, Ben's mom was there with artifacts. So we got some of the kids in there to be able to touch and, and play with skeletons and, and tortoise, tortoise shells. And it was really a nice, I, I think, very nice event. I think it was such a nice event that we.
It was nice.
I think that we should plan on doing it every year. I don't think it's much, much more effort than we put in this year. Really, we just need one, one, uh, one meeting and try to get everybody on board and.
We have the tent. We have the banner. We have the brochures. The more we can get those brochures in people's hands, the better.
Unless there's a problem.
Hand them all out?
No. Uh, I would say, no, we didn't hand them all out. We have a bunch. There's some set up, uh, at the table. When you first walk into town hall, there's some on the table at wetlands. Uh, I will ask the tax assessor, although there are no brochures in his office currently, if he wouldn't mind if we had them on, on that table.
Can you kind of hand them out as people come in and file applications? Just like, hey, take this with you.
As they, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sure. Oh, you mean in wetlands office?
Yeah.
Oh, sure. Sure.
So it's okay for you guys to bring up next April and we'll see if we want to go forward with it, with doing it again. But like I said, it should be a little effort. And I think it's a lot of, a lot of good, uh, it's a great opportunity for our citizens to get involved. We had, we had Aquarian and you there with specific information, computers set up. We answered questions.
The markers.
The markers. Yep. We had the, uh, wetland markers on the table.
Right.
Uh, so people were inquiring, um, I will say at, when we had periods of, of quiet, I was out in the crowd trying to give out. And then I felt like people were, like I was trying to stalk people. So I backed off of that. You know, I'd walk up and say, are you, are you residents of the town? And they would, they, they.
Oh, boy. You're trying to sell me solar.
Right, right. So I got a little weird reaction. So I backed off of that and waited for them to come to us.
I was, my wife learned this week that there is a family from Brooklyn that Airbnb's in Monroe every year, which is the weirdest thing I've ever heard. But.
Is that, yeah.
Maybe we take our community for granted.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's, it's an amazing farmer's market. They do a really great job.
So appreciate you.
You guys did a great job too. I did stop by at the end. You guys did a great job.
Um, I'll be happy to do another one next summer if, if you want to spread it out, if you wanted to do more than one. Just one. One's good for.
Yeah, we just need one.
I was going to say, if you wanted to do more than one, if you could get other.
Any negatives to hear? Nothing hurt. I didn't hear any negatives from anyone.
Other than the creepy guy kind of appropriate.
Kelly was happy with us as, as a group because we were right on it, on everything. In fact, she did comment to me, pump, uh, personally that, you know, you guys are, you guys.
Was that? Was that?
Kelly.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. But everybody pitched in. It was great. Thank you. Okay.
All right. So then, uh, I guess that's it. Uh, we need a motion to adjourn.
Well, what about the stone? Oh, okay. Sorry. We already did Stone Farm. Got it.
I'll make.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.